Commissioners Court of Grimes County, Texas will be held Wednesday, the 22nd day of August, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. It is 9:00 a.m. in the Grimes County Annex Building, 114 West Buffington Avenue, Anderson, Texas, at which time the following subjects will be discussed and acted upon. The meeting is called to order. Would you please rise for the invocation, remain standing for the pledges to the U.S. and the Texas flag? Williamson, if you would...
Certainly. Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to gather this day. May your spirit be with us in this building as our commissioners make their decisions that are necessary for the county. And Father, please look after our early responders, all of our responders, that they may be safe whatever they may be doing. And Lord, look after our military personnel also. In your son's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Would you be seated, please? Our second item on the agenda is public comments. We look forward to hearing from any citizens, employees, or whoever. Ms. LaFlore?
My name is Diane LaFlore, and I am the district clerk. I just wanted y'all to be aware that I was given this morning the appointment of the auditor signed by Judge McKegg, and her office is beginning August 13th of this year and ending August 13th of 2020. And the salary structure that both judges have signed, and that includes a 2% raise that the county broadly is getting. Okay? If you've got any questions, don't ask, I don't have any answers.
Who did they appoint?
Mary, I'm sorry. Did I not say that?
No.
Okay. Actually...
And that needs to be recorded in the minutes of the committee...
Yeah, it does. I was gonna say, it doesn't have her name on it, but it does. Yes, and it will be recorded.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments, announcements, things that you'd like to share with the And if there are no further public comments, we will move now to consent agenda items number three, number four, number five, and number six. Consider and take action to approve payroll. Four, consider and take action to approve the chairperson's list of claims and bills. Five, consider and take action to approve budget amendments and/or line item transfers. And agenda item number six, approved minutes of previous Commissioners' Court meetings. Regular meeting on July 25th, 2018 at 9:00 a.m., special meeting on August 1st, 2018 at 9:00 a.m., workshop meeting on August 1st, 2018 at 10:00 a.m., special meeting on August 1st, 2018, after-workshop meeting that begins at 10:00 p.m., public hearing on August 8th, 2018 at 8:30 a.m., regular meeting on August 8th, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. And the minutes are attached. We've been busy.
Is there any particular reason why the line item transfer is in this format that you presented on the IT?
Yes, because there's not any change in money in the budget. It's just moving, since the IT director didn't start till the middle of December, there was enough in his salary line item to cover the part-time position for the, or the full-time position for the rest of this year. And then, there's still money left, gonna be left in his line item after all of this.
Okay. Thank you.
Please don't tell anybody else there's money left, okay?
There's not much.
Okay.
But Judge, I will comment on that. Historically, for the last eight or so years, people haven't spent all of their budgets. And that's why we've got such a good balance.
Understood.
If there are not any other concerns or questions, I'd like to make the motion that we approve consent agenda items three, four, five, and six.
Second motion. There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski to approve consent agenda items three, four, five, and six. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That will take us to agenda item number seven. Commissioner Dobianski, consider and recognize the following employee for years of service: Cole Brzezinski for 10 years, and also Jay Law for 10 years.
Starting in October of last year, we started this process of recognizing employees for 10 years. And today, if you'll come up, I'll give you a picture.
Thank you.
I wanted to give you a day off, but Commissioner wanted to give you the...
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're amazing.
Thank you.
Y'all get your speeches prepared?
Yeah.
Great speech.
Thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to work for the county.
Thank you.
We appreciate the work you guys do. And please stay hydrated this week, 'cause we need you next week also. Thank you, fellas. We will now move to agenda item number eight. Navasota Grimes County Chamber of Commerce, Johnny McNally, Executive Director. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I apologize for late, I guess.
Did you go on Highway 90? Welcome.
There's some information I want to share with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you and give you an update of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm going to go very quickly, 'cause I know you have a full agenda. Typically, this summer, the hot period is a slow period for the Chamber of Commerce. Has not been the case this year. We've had lots of activity. We've had, over the past month, we've had nine new members join. And our membership is at a very healthy level right now. I'm proud to report. Since the last time I spoke to you, we had a small business forum. That was a collaborative effort between Burleson County and Washington County and Grimes County. We were able to recognize two Small Businesses of the Year, those being Miller's Insurance and Camp Allen, who are named Small Businesses of the Year for this year in Grimes County. We also had a new member breakfast in July, where our newest members were able to come together with our current members or our existing members, and explain who they are, what they do, why they're in Grimes County, and so forth. This is a good way to integrate them into the Chamber of Commerce.
Johnny, is there any, don't mess your schedule up, but is there any way that y'all can move your new member breakfast from Wednesdays? Or is that kind of a...
Sure, I mean, it's a standing thing, but it doesn't have to be.
Well, and we're a standing thing on Wednesdays, and it does have to be, so...
And we put it, when we put it, for y'all, we're on Tuesdays. And so that, since that switched, I think it's created the conflict. But I'd be happy to move to a Thursday, that's fine.
At your convenience, at least, maybe it gives us, from the court, an opportunity to come and visit.
Sure.
Just a consideration, sir.
No taken.
Thank you. Thank you.
As far as education, we've had a great collaboration with Glenn College. As you probably are aware, our unemployment is very low in Grimes County. Last I saw it was 4.8 percent. And in Brazos County, it's even lower than that, it's somewhere around 3.28 percent. So it's really important that we have this great relationship with Glenn College, that we're able to have them provide local training here in Grimes County for the jobs that are open in Grimes County. In June, we had a meeting with local business representatives to find out what their needs were. What do we need to train for you to have a hireable workforce? We've got a lot of folks who are looking to hire right now. They gave us feedback, and so Glenn created a curriculum that is being taught actually this month, last month, and this month. They're in the midst of teaching certain courses that the businesses had asked them to teach. And so, the goal is to have the folks who are unemployed or underemployed now have this basic training, and they walk away with a Glenn certificate, gives them a leg up when they go to apply for a job. So that's underway right now. We intend to continue the training sessions here locally. In October, we're looking at doing the industrial boot camp again. The industrial boot camp was successful back in February and March. Out of the 10 people who started the class, eight graduated, and five had interviews that led to some employment, is what I understand. So it's been very beneficial. In addition, we continue with the Chamber Academy Lunch and Learns. We had one recently on nonprofits, and another on HR issues and challenges. The one we have today at noon is for the preparing for your aging elderly relatives and transitioning them into an assisted living facility or nursing home. There are steps that you need to take years ahead of that to make sure that you can protect assets, and you find the right facility that's the most beneficial for you. That's at noon today at the Navasota Center. The ones that we have coming up in September and October, September, we have networking techniques to make your networking efforts effective. We have a lot of people who go to networking events, and they hand out 40 business cards, and they walk away going, gosh, that was a great event, I gave away 40 cards. But there are ways you can network that, where you may hand out fewer cards, but make better connections that will lead to better relationships. So that'll be in September. In October, we have representatives from A&amp;M teaching on cybersecurity. And then in November, we'll have Better Business Bureau talking about holiday scams that you need to be aware of. So we have a good slate for the Chamber Academy. Regarding economic development, we have a number of businesses that are looking to expand in Grimes County, and we're working with them. I know I've been working with Commissioner Walker and Commissioner Dobianski on different, and Judge Pfaff on different opportunities that have come in y'all's areas. And the things that we have in development right now are, could add up to over $100 million to the tax rolls, and possibly 60 or more jobs for the county. So now it's our time to make these things occur and keep on pushing forward with those. We're also looking to recruit companies to come into Grimes County. We already started this process where we're meeting with existing companies and saying, okay, how are things going with the local government, the county government, state, and federal? How are things going with your company? So we get an idea of who's here, what they do, and also determine who do they, who are their suppliers? And possibly go to recruit those companies to come here too, if it's beneficial for them. And that also gives us an idea of what we need to train for, for the local workforce. So if we're trying to recruit a particular kind of company, we can tailor training to make that more attractive for them as well. So that's on the economic development front. I attended the Texas Rural Challenge, which was in July in New Brunswick. It's a two-day economic development workshop. And there was a, there were common themes, but some of the things they talked about was rural flight. It's hard to say rural flight, but a lot of rural counties are experiencing people leaving for other opportunities in bigger areas and larger cities. Grimes County hasn't experienced that. We're actually, I think, on a growth path, but, and we probably will continue, but there are areas of Texas that are not on that growth path, and they're losing people to bigger cities. And they also stressed, 1,000 people a day are moving to Texas, and we're able to employ those people who are moving here. We just have that kind of a robust economy here in Texas. The other thing they stressed was regionalism, working as we do with Washington County and Burleson County, Brazos County, Montgomery County. We have a good relationship with all of them, and I feel like the economic development arms of each of those counties, we're all working very well together, and I'm happy to report that, as we do these collaborative events, for instance. And I know that, I feel confident that if there's something that comes up, say, in Brazos County, that they don't feel like is a good fit for Brazos County, perhaps it's a good fit for Grimes County, and that's their thinking as well. Sparks promotional activities, we had the Cinco de Mayo Festival back in May, it was a really nice event. Wasn't a huge crowd, but it was our first year doing it, and will probably continue to do it in the future. It was just a fun, fun community event, just to promote the area. We had the Realtor Breakfast last week. We had a lot of Realtors in attendance, and we presented on the topic of high-speed internet fiber that's making its way through Grimes County. It's gone through Burleson, it's making its way through Washington, Grimes is next, and then it goes up towards Brazos County, makes kind of a ring around the Brazos Valley. But it is about to cross through Grimes County. That's a significant infrastructure improvement that will bring high-speed internet to medical or healthcare providers. When you say healthcare providers, you think, well, that's hospitals and clinics, but it's also school districts, because for a lot of people, that is a primary care provider. And it also includes, it could include city and county government.
Jails.
And jails, exactly.
Did the Realtors have any feedback for you that might be appropriate for us to know, or issues that they're dealing with within the county for housing, lack of housing, too much housing, apartments, no apartments, et cetera?
That did not come up as a concern, but I know that there are lots of housing starts that have been put forth already this year, we're ahead of last year's rate. And there's a subdivision of duplexes that was being looked at in the Dove Crossing area that'll bring some affordable housing options. But the one message I got was, we're really busy in August, so please hold this event in October. It's really hard to get here in August.
Sure.
So that was a very positive thing, that they were all super busy right now.
And they were super excited that we have at least three major subdivisions that have gone into second and third phases. So one had 75 home sites, and then Stone Ridge, and also Dove Cross and Hesley Homes. And Anderson on Highway 90.
Yeah, there's one that's in the further south as well. It's called Reagan Estates.
Reagan Estates.
Right.
What's the name of the one out by the airport?
The Con Lake Estates.
Seems like there's new rooftops that have gone up in there also.
There are, they're about to go into base two.
That's with the 75.
Okay.
And then on the drawing board, I believe it's a base three and possibly a base four for that one. Let's see, I wanted to mention, September 12th, speaking of promotional activities, we have our Business and Retail Expo and Job Fair. So we haven't had a business expo here in about two and a half, for about two and a half years. So it's, we kind of waited until there was an interest, and people said, hey, we need to have a business expo, and it started to happen this year. So sure enough, September 12th, we'll have, we have so many new companies that have opened in Grimes County, and this gives them an opportunity to meet the public, tell them what they do, who they are, where they're located. And also gives our existing companies who've been here for a while a chance to meet a new customer in the base. And at the same time, we're doing a job fair. That serves a couple of purposes, obviously. It gives a chance for the businesses who are hiring to collect resumes, even conduct interviews if they want to at the time. And it also will encourage more foot traffic through the event.
And the time of it?
4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. It's free to the public. If a company wants to exhibit, they just need to contact the Chamber of Commerce.
Are you gonna have any restaurants out with tasting booths?
We'll have restaurants out with tastings, yes. And then the Diamond Heads will be selling food also. So we might have a dinner, Diamond Heads will be your source.
Okay. Expo Center?
That's right.
The time one?
Four to seven p.m. September the 12th.
Then we have chamber golf tournaments coming around again, and you'll be hearing more about it. It's day and night tournament, and it's been very successful for us over the past few years, so we'll continue that same program, but we've added a few things to make it better. One of the things I believe we'll have this year is a long drive hitter. This guy can hit the ball 325 yards, is what I heard. And so he'll be doing exhibit and exhibit prior to the match, and then I think there'll be an opportunity for him to hit one of your drives if he wanted to during the tournament.
So how much does it cost to bring Tiger Woods?
Tiger Woods? It is nice. It's phenomenal. So the golf tournament is on October 5th, and then that's followed by Reds, Weeds, and Blues on November the 10th. That'll be a day event, a daytime event. Last year, we launched that, so Reds, Weeds, and Blues, Reds meaning wine, Weeds meaning craft beer, and Blues meaning blues music. And we'll have that on November 10th, which is tied to Veterans Day celebration. So we'll start off with the parade, and then BFW will have their lunch that they always have, and then Arvin will kick off after that. The intent, and there are multiple intents here, but we want to bring visitors to Grimes County, so that they can see what it's like here, and visit all the specialty shops we have in downtown Navasota for pre-Christmas purchases. And it also promotes our Blues heritage from Navasota Blues Capital, so to continue that heritage. Mixer we have, next one we have scheduled is that Turner Pearson Folds on September 27th. And the theme for this will be tailgating 101. So if you have any questions on how to tailgate, they're gonna be there to answer the questions. Chamber Academy will continue, as I mentioned, with the topics I mentioned earlier. We have our Coffee with the Chamber every third Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. at Java Hot Spot. Everyone's invited to attend, where we just talk about things that are happening in the community, businesses that are expanding, or whatever news we have to share. And we have a buzz tour coming in on September 6th. They are here for the law enforcement tour, Texas Ranger Law Enforcement Tour. So it's about 32, maybe a little over 32 people coming to town, and we'll start off in Navasota area, go to the Warlock House, wind up in Anderson at the law enforcement center for a tour of the jail. That's my update for you, but the thing I'm trying to stress here is the things that the Chamber is doing, they're relevant and they're impactful, but they're also a lot of fun. And I want to encourage anyone who's hearing me, to come to the Chamber, and you'll have a good time, I promise you. It's one thing I, I don't, I want these things to be important, I don't care so much that we make money on the deal, or whatever it is. I just want it to be a good event for the public, or a good event for the people who attend. So I encourage you all, come out, have a good time. And that's my update for you all.
You want to promote your website, since we are recording this, and it will be on the...
Sure, navasotagrymschamber.com. That's it. And I'm here for questions, if y'all have any.
Thank you for your effort.
I don't have any questions, I'd just like to make a comment. Thank you for doing what you do for Grimes County, you promote a lot of things in Grimes County, you're doing a great job.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
And since you were also selected as best dress of the year, thank you for being presentable as you represent our county.
I really like best looking.
Best looking, yeah.
Anyway, I'm here for, if you need me for anything, and we'll just continue working to make good things happen for Grimes County.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your efforts.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to run.
That's fine.
And I'm, so I'm sorry for being late, and I'm sorry for leaving.
Take the back roll that I gave you.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will now move to Emergency Management Subdivision Coordinator, Mr. David Lilly. Consider and take action necessary to approve the replat of King Oaks Section 3 that combines Lot 444, 2.29 acres, and Lot 445, 1.78 acres, into a single lot to be redesigned as, excuse me, redesignated as Lot 444-R, 4.07 acres. Mr. Lilly?
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, and as we discussed during the public hearing, this is a replat combining two lots where the builder, or the property owner is ready to start building a home. And as I mentioned before, the frontage that the property owner will have onto Henley Cove, which is a whole public access, is much better now than it was before. It still met the criteria for the subdivision rules for the Lot 444, but it was very narrow. And so this opens that up much wider, gives him more options on where to put his driveway. And I don't have any other issues or concerns with this combining of these two lots.
Okay.
I move to approve the replat of King Oaks Section 3, combining Lot 444 and Lot 445 into a single lot, redesignated as Lot 444-R.
Second motion. There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Mallett, there's a second by Commissioner Dobianski on agenda item number nine. Is there any further discussion? That all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Lilly, thank you.
Thank you.
And we need to sign out before you go...
Oh, I'm not leaving.
Okay, but before you get away? All right. Mr. Walker, could you join us for the road and bridge report, please, sir?
The crews are still busy with our chip ceiling projects that's coming along. It will continue probably all the way through September, by the time we're finished with everything. We're putting a second course on the land this morning. We finished Crawson Speedway Ranch, Azalea Camellia got finished here recently. Azalea Camellia, literally before the crews had left the site, we had somebody came in and damaged the road.
Do we know?
They went on one side, no, they didn't catch them. It's like a triangle. We were on one side, and they went on the other side that we'd just finished, and peeled out and damaged the road. So really frustrating. People that aren't real appreciative of what's being done.
Let me make a public appeal at this time. Anybody within the sound of my voice, or Mr. Walker's voice, or if any of you watch at home, and you see somebody destroying our roads, particularly after we just get through surfacing them, you see something, say something. We won't identify you, but we sure want to identify the culprits that are using our, wasting your tax dollars and my tax dollars. And as we try to get these roads surfaced, and get some of the dust complaints and those issues behind us, it just, I can't tell you how aggravated I am at looking at some of those pictures you've sent.
It's very frustrating. You know, they just seem like every neighborhood has gone into, there's at least one knucklehead that makes sense, gonna be funny to tear something up that everybody else appreciates.
Well, I'll make this promise, if you'll do my road, I will guard it until it's set.
I'll make note of that. Please don't. Moving on.
You just moved to the last of the line.
Well, in line with what's being said, I had a call from a citizen, he said, I just want to compliment you. He said, I know there is nothing, there's nothing going on under the table between the county judge and the road and bridge commissioner, 'cause I just came down your road, and it's awful. That's scout's honor, that's a true call. Yes, sir, go ahead, please.
Elsewhere, we're continuing on with herbicide spraying. We have replaced bridge deck on 232 that was damaged that somebody drove off of the runners, the boards, trained runners and rail, and broke off a bunch of the boards down one side, twice, in one way, and knocked out about four boards, and came back and knocked out a bunch more. We had somebody that, one of the guys on the crew saw it, first wanted to see it, and pulled boards out when he first came through. When he came back later, there were 11 boards broken. So not only can't drive, but doesn't realize the damage he's doing, and probably lucky he didn't end up in the bottom of the creek. But that's been repaired, we'll turn in an insurance claim on that, I don't know where that will go. We're also in the process of replacing the bridge deck on 179 today. This is one of the items that came out of the recent Tech Dot Bridge inspection reports. We're trying to take care of the issues that they brought up there. Also from Tech Dot... Also from Tech Dot, we received an allocation of wrap material that's moved to the new yard on 2445 last week. About 1,200 yards of wrap material that's come off some of their projects. We've had to receive that material also. And then elsewhere, David Lilly and I have been spending quite a bit of time with representatives of FEMA. We completed the inspections this week. They've been actually going out literally measuring every damaged site and verifying what quantities we've turned in for reimbursement from FEMA from Hurricane Harvey. We're coming up this week, the first anniversary of Hurricane Harvey. And still have not seen any of the reimbursements come back out of that yet. It's a long, very detailed process. We completed the field work side of it and hopefully the rest of them get wrapped up here in the next few months and start to see some ramp up and just coming back in. That's about it. The... Any questions or comments?
I'll just reiterate the comment I made to you yesterday. Appreciate the work that our crews are doing, particularly in this heat and whatever we need to do to keep them healthy and hydrated and safe. I think that's very important.
And we are gonna take care of that. I did look into that and I was advised that that is something we can't do. We're gonna look to shake for that.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Commissioner, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Walker. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 10, County Attorney, Mr. Foltz. Consider and take action to approve the county child welfare services non-financial agreement with the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services. Mr. Foltz, I understand that maybe we need to get some more information with regards to that agenda item, is that correct?
I'm hearing that, Judge, that may be the deal. This came to me for review of the agreement, so when it shows me as a sponsor, I'm not really sure it's mine to present, other than to say I've reviewed it and I can point out issues with it. But if there's somebody wants to make a comment about the substance of the policy that's not here or doesn't have the information they need, then certainly I would suggest tabling, et cetera.
Yeah, to leave a call yesterday, I thought it was...
We had a call from the auditor's office, they weren't able to verify some information, so what you've seen is fine, but they don't feel like it's appropriate for us to approve or disapprove, not approve it at this time. So we'll table the item until a further court date.
Fine with me, and feel free to put it under somebody else's title.
Ms. Wagner, will you make note of that, please? The counselor wants to know part of that?
Yes.
Thank you.
I didn't say that, I just, I don't need to be the sponsor.
All right. Thank you, sir. Then County Judge Joe Faugh, Agenda Item Number 11. Consider and take action to approve the Economic Development Services Agreement between Grimes County and Navisota County Chamber of Commerce for the 2018-19 fiscal year, October 1, 2018 through September 30, 2019, and authorize the county judge's signatory seat, Attachment Number 11. In my review of the attachment, I didn't see anything other than the date changes, the amounts were the same, and the verbiage was the same. Did you see anything, Mr. Foltz?
My staff tells me it's the same as last year.
Okay.
And he also brought his information for the review for you.
So I would make a motion that we take action to approve the Economic Development Services Agreement between Grimes County and Navisota Grimes County Chamber of Commerce for the period of October 2018 through September 30, 2019, as it has been submitted.
A second?
Okay. There's a motion before the court by Joe Faugh to approve, a second by Commissioner Walker. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of approving Agenda Item Number 11, say aye? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Number 12, consider and take action to establish the salary, expenses and other allowances of the county court of law judge according to local government code 152.01 and 152.013, see Attachment Number 12. Court, this was an oversight, well, I say an oversight, it was a recalculation, and once we did a recalculation, we did find that the county court of law judge, Tuck McLean, would be able to enjoy the 2% across the board COLA increase if indeed the county commissioners, county commissioners' court ultimately approves that. And therefore, we had to run an additional ad in the paper notifying the public that has been done. A copy of the ad that was run is available for your review.
If there are no questions, I'd like to make the motion to establish the salary, expenses and other allowances of the county court at law judge according to local government code 152.01 and 152.013.
Thank you, Commissioner. There's a motion before the court, is there a second?
A second.
It's not significant, Judge, but that first one is .011.
.0?
Thank you.
Just ask the minister if I can.
Yeah, there's no .011. Thank you. There is a motion before the court and second by, from Commissioner Walker, second by Commissioner Cox to approve Agenda Item Number 12. All in favor say aye? Aye? Oppose? Motion carries, thank you. Number 13, review and take possible action in regards to the salary compensation of the crimes victims coordinator due to expanded functions. I can take the lead on that, but Ms. Williams, if, because you brought it to my attention, if you would not, if you would mind, if you would not mind sharing with the commissioners some of our discussion, I would appreciate it.
Under the reign of Judge Dixon, he had received a call, I think from a state agency over citizen complaining about not having services for deceased. And what I handed to you was the code, the safety, health and safety code chapter of what the commissioners' court is supposed to provide. I was not, I came to the commissioners' court under his leadership and with the help of our county attorney, drafted up rules and it was adopted by commissioners' court on what we were supposed to do. And what they did was appoint, appointed me, and I was supposed to be temporary under Judge Dixon, but of course, I'm still doing it. And this is not my first time coming before you to ask for, Tuck McLean and I came last year out of budget and he did some explanation. And I think Mary told me that Judge Lamont wanted to give me a raise, but at that time it was a budget point.
Okay. I want to correct your terminology that you just used, and that is, it was, you're asking for a raise. Based on our discussion and the history that you shared with me, and I know it's semantics, but I would look at it as a salary adjustment for work being done, not a raise.
Okay.
Some might argue that point, because if it's more money, it's a raise in their eyes, and I understand that. But I would argue the point on behalf of you that it's a salary adjustment, not a merit increase. I just, again, it might be semantics for some, but I think that there's a time for a merit raise, there's a time for a salary adjustment.
And the duties that I do, they have increased. I've probably had about eight through the county that we have taken care of. I recommended six to the anatomical company, and that's a company, if you have cancer, diabetes, they, for families that really have some money, but not enough. And so they have the option of going to those companies. And so I help with families to try to find other resources. Also work with hospice, which is a big thing on a regular basis, and nursing homes. Because people leave their loved ones in a nursing home and they don't come back to see about them and no one claims the body. Also, another example, an eighteen-year-old was living with her dad in Navisota and had no resources. He had no insurance or anything, so that comes upon the county to take care of. She was still in school. And so that's some of the examples of things that I do. And then I work with the film home directors on autopsies, getting the bodies, taking them back to different places, and we negotiated with our county judge, being a witness, they needed more money. They were asking for more money because they were not even breaking that cost. So we...
Well, that's our next Agenda Item, so we'll hold that discussion for the, for that. But in regards to you, one question I would have, were all of these job duties and responsibilities a part of your current job description that was submitted?
No.
Okay.
Never have been, really.
Okay. Are you working with anybody to, or have those been included in your job description at this point?
No, but I also make note on my crime victims' job description.
Yes, ma'am.
In addition, this is what I do.
Okay. So it is noted in your job descrip, your crime victims' job description now?
Yes.
Okay.
Not as far, I don't have the job description, which I have it right here.
Okay.
But it was just noted.
All right, so is, I know Commissioner Cox is diligently working on our process, and as he said, the snow cone's getting bigger on the top. But I, Commissioner, I don't want to exert your authority, but I guess what I'm going to suggest is the proper way to date, the way we've been doing this, get that information, put it in your current job description for the crimes victims coordinator. We get that sent into Lucy, or even have Lucy help you compile that or modify that job description, then that...
I gotta see it from Lucy, because apparently I've had job descriptions, I was one of probably the first people to do a job description because it is a question about salary or hourly through tax. And somehow it disappears out of the files.
Okay.
I want to make sure that it's still, is taxed in.
Well, it won't disappear this time.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll get it in, then that needs to be submitted before the job evaluation team and reviewed, and then based on that review, additional job duties and responsibilities should be considered by the evaluation team. And then we would, the team would make a decision or a recommendation, I would say, that you're okay where you're at, or there doesn't need to be a salary adjustment. And then they bring that before the court and we approve it or not approve it. But we can...
I prefer to come to the commissioners' court because I'm elected by the people, for the people. I don't like the evaluation teams, I know that you, you tell me, but I just consider, I think it would be more fairly, fair to me to be before commissioners' court. I know if you wanted it the other way, I would rather that.
Well, and I'm just making a suggestion for how we're doing it at this time. I know Commissioner Cox is working on the procedure.
Yes.
And part of that is probably to get employees that are not elected off of that evaluation team, and I don't have a problem with that. And then the court would then make, do the evaluation and then make the recommendation. So however we finalize, it's fine, but we won't let it, we won't let it disappear this time, we'll make sure. You get a yes or a no?
Thank you.
Okay?
I appreciate it.
Would you hold your ground? So on, if you don't mind, so on Agenda Item Number 13, is it fair to say we've done our review and we're waiting?
I had something to add to that.
All right.
I'm confused. And maybe Commissioner Cox can clear it up, because I thought at one of the meetings, we were going to work to establish a policy, but until then, we thought that we, as a commissioners' court, was going to hear the people who were going to come before, that had changes to be made, because the team is also confused as to what their role is in this. And, you know, that we had a long, lengthy discussion about it. You may be able to add to that, Commissioner Cox, I'm just confused, are we doing teams? Are we doing commissioners' court?
Well, right now, we're diligently working on, Lucy and I and some of the other people that have been involved in the process of coming up with the policy, but there's a lot of variables that go into developing the policy on how to address certain things. As of today, there is not a policy in place that addresses how the process works. So voiding a policy, I mean, it's just kind of at the whim of whatever the commissioners' court wants to do at this point on how they want to handle it, how they want to handle it.
I thought that the team was sunsetted according to, at the last meeting, when they finished their work before, and we talked about how the people have been put in the position to make evaluations on other workers or other elected officials. We talked about all of that and that maybe the commissioners' court should hear all of the things that want to come to make any changes to the grade structure or to their job descriptions or their job duties. Therefore, we would all know what was happening with the various departments.
I think the operative word in your comment just then of maybe the commissioners' court were here, it wasn't completely decided that that's the direction we were going to go. And I don't think we were doing, planning on hearing any until we got direction from Commissioner Cox on what that policy would look like.
Well, aren't we still hearing other committee, I mean, other elected officials coming before?
There was one recently, yes.
Well, they have a right to bring it before the court.
Well, I know that, I just heard her request that, and I know that there are other, I think, elected officials that are asking for consideration. So it's just confusing to me as to what we're doing.
Well, the sun may have set on the team under Judge Lamont, but the sun rose.
But when did it rise?
Well, when I took office, it rose because we started the job evaluation team.
Well, we also heard from the team members that they were confused as to what their job or their duties is in this team. You know, we heard Jessica stand there and said she was confused as to why they were hearing it again.
My understanding of what we were going to do is what Judge Faugh said, that when he got a, got a policy together, then we would decide how we were going to handle this.
But in the meantime?
That we weren't going, we weren't going to, we weren't going to entertain them. So that was my understanding.
We weren't going to entertain them?
Well, approved or disapproved, but I think in Ms. Williams' case, giving her the direction on Agenda Item Number 13, make sure that your job description is where it needs to be, everything's in there, submit it to Lucy, and we won't act upon it until we get the policy direction from Commissioner Cox.
And I think that's probably the appropriate route to take, because I did review her job description that's available before today, and it is not officially in her job duty. There's a note at the bottom of the job duty that says she does perform those responsibilities. But as far as that being official job duty for the crime victims coordinator, it's not descriptive on her job description.
In fact, it was somebody else's job description that was in the notebook.
So those are additional duties above and beyond what the crime victims coordinator is responsible for doing. So that does need to be taken into consideration.
Agreed, yeah. And it needs to be in that job description also.
It does, if that's what, if that's the direction that the court chooses to go with that.
Let me ask a question, does it have to be in her job description as crime victim liaison, or is it a separate job description?
Coordinator.
Coordinator.
The liaisons are Corey and the people at the law enforcement.
John?
Yeah. Well, I'm sure I have to do the job description layout the way y'all are doing it now.
But what I'm asking is...
That's not included.
You're, you're saying added, additional, but what if somebody else come in, say you retired, maybe that person is applying for your job as coordinator, are they also applying for the job as pauper, I mean?
If that's, if that's the way the job description is written, the answer is yes.
It's up to the Mr. Score. Things change.
Things do change. And so to answer your question, Ms. Walker, at the time, if that is the job description that's approved, the answer would be yes.
Okay. That is one clear.
Alright, so you're gonna take action, Brenda, we're not gonna take action for the time being on thirteen. On fourteen, review and take possible action to adjust, increase funeral rates, and clarify wait time while conducting body pickups for the counties, see attachment number fourteen, my uh wordsmithing was not very good, but that's what we're talking about, is funeral homes picking up bodies. And in my conversation with a couple of uh funeral directors within the county, my discussions with Ms. Williams, it's been brought to my attention, we have two issues. Currently, we've been paying sometimes two hundred dollars, sometimes two hundred and fifty dollars for pickups of deceased within the county. And it's my understanding that two hundred and two hundred, or two hundred and fifty, depending, is not necess- because they need a body bag after decom- after the body starts to decompose. So that's a separate charge, but an additional charge in kinda learning more than I wanna know about all this, but. Anyway, so the cost that the funeral directors are encountering is more than we're paying. So I have talked to them and asked them, if we do three hundred dollars for a body pickup, would that take care of their need? And they said yes, but then one of the directors brought up the issue of we get a call from dispatch to go to location A and pick up body A. And when we get there, then those in authority are not through doing with body A what they need to. So they're on hold until the body is released. And they said, you know, if it's when that, within that first hour, it's not a problem, he said, but because this one director was busy picking up a body at one location, got a call to pick up a body at another location, he called another funeral director and said, can you help me out? The director said yes. When the funeral director got over there to pick up the body, then they had to wait for an extended period of time, well more than an hour. So funeral director A had to pay funeral director B more because of the wait time. Anyway, uh my suggestion was, and what I'm proposing to the court is that we increase the Grimes County funeral homes to three hundred dollars per body pickup. And that would include that first hour from the dispatch call, but if the dispatch pulls the trigger too quickly on getting a funeral director out there, then I asked him, I said, what would be a consider, what would you consider an appropriate rate? And they said, well, we're paying fifty dollars an hour for wait, so if they get out there and they've gotta wait an additional two hours past the original hour, then that would be a four hundred dollar fee. That's my thought, so. Anyway, working with Ms. Williams and the funeral directors, talking with the funeral directors, it's not my decision to make solely, but this is what they said would work for them for the time being, so Commissioners, comments, questions?
You clarified the only question I had, on whose, whose, whose call was it when the clock begins to tick?
It's this, this, dispatch is making the call to the funeral directors for the, the pickup. And so, and the one director made the call and he said, I know we got two calls and maybe a third call, hey, where are you, where are you? And he said, I'm on my way, I'm on my, finally got there, and then when he did indeed get there, then there was a, well over a two-hour delay before they released the body, because of the authorities. I don't know if that was the JP's, or the sheriff's office, or DPS, or whoever, whatever authorities were on site before they released the body, it was a, I guess, over a two-hour wait. And that was a concern. Did, did that answer your question, Commissioner?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think this increase is needed because we have lost some of the directors who were picking up bodies, they no longer do it in the county, and we, we can't afford to lose all of them. Because if we have to go outside the county, it's gonna cost a lot more than what, what we would be paying if we raise this, raise the fees.
And we, we effectively only have two resources currently that Ms. Williams feels are appropriate. I hate to call them vendors, but vendors.
We may have one more, but I, I did alleviate one because.
On some issues.
Yes.
And I did, just for a comparison, I called the Magnolia Funeral Home, Glenn Addison, and his initial fee was significantly higher than what we're getting internal to the county, so.
Judge, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Brenda, how many of these, this is only where the county is paying, because there's no family or friends who are willing to pay.
It's more than that, it's with the autopsies also.
Okay, but how many are you, how many would you guess, a month or a year, are we looking at?
It varies.
Well, is it five or is it a hundred?
Yeah, not a few.
Anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five a year, on average, and some years it'll.
I think last year might have been forty, maybe the average of thirty-five.
Okay, I wanna be sure the court understood the undertaking that we're talking about is not significant in the grand scheme of things as far as the increase. But I also wanna point out, and Commissioner Cox has chased me down many times and said, why is it the county doesn't have a policy on this? And of course, Commissioner Cox has been here as long as I have, but he hasn't been in that seat as long as I've been in this seat. Um, it's because we often fly by the seat of our pants, and something like this will only be reflected in these minutes. It's nowhere else.
That's right.
So you're gonna have Ms. Williams that'll remember until there's no continuity in that office, or Ms. Nichols will remember until there's no continuity in that office, or you and I will remember until we wake up tomorrow, or whenever we lose this memory. But things like, I just wanna point out to you that many times, courts will undertake the same thing uh and, and make a change, and another court won't know anything about it years from now. So to the degree that you can record this some way, somehow, in a way that's meaningful, that can, for which there can be some continuity with the next court, uh about how this was done, when this was done, just make that note to, it used to be that you'd call Marie down at county clerk's office and say, Marie, can you pull all of the minutes that have anything to do with bodies, or what, you know, whatever it may be? And maybe you hit gold, or maybe you didn't, and that may be what you're left with here, so I just make that point. Sometimes we may have, or you may have, or any one of us may have a great idea. But the recording of that great idea sometimes lacks something, so that there's continuity on this issue. It'll be fine for the coming months, but for five years after that, or ten years after that, none of us will probably be in these seats, but we'll remember what we decided on, why there was an increase, and what that increased.
We might be participants of this agenda item.
You may, that's right.
Mr. Foltz?
Yes.
And I appreciate what you're saying, and I haven't been chasing you down, but when this came up, I was asking the same thing. Where is it written that we can, it, it's not written anywhere? So, and maybe this is a discussion for another time, but what, something like this doesn't go in our personnel manual.
Right.
So is there a county policy manual?
No, Ms. Williams is gonna hate me for this. This is not, this doesn't fall under her, her umbrella as crime victim coordinator, that's dictated by Code of Crime Procedure. And she is effectively uh an agent or employee of the prosecutors, DA and the county attorney. Well, this doesn't have anything to do with it.
Yes.
In, in this role, you're making her your agent as, as a court, uh or, or somebody who's subordinate to the court.
Yes, sir.
If that is the job description that you wanna give this role, and you say, look, we're not putting somebody in here unless they take this thing on, A, you wanna have buy-in from the prosecutors, that the prosecutors don't say, hey, we're not gonna allow you to add this duty on to this person that we have. Of course, you control the purse string, so you tell the prosecutors to go to heck, or whatever you wanna say. Point being is, if this additional duty is a job for someone in that seat, you, I would think, could dictate to that person, keep a book of your policies. How we, how we get things done with regard to indigent uh decedents, uh and what we do with bodies, how much we pay for bodies, et cetera, et cetera. You, if this person is, is potentially gonna have an increase in, in pay because they have that increased duty, and it is potentially subordinate to the court, it would seem to me that you could dictate, or request, let's say, that person keep a manual, and maybe the manual's one page, but that person keeps something to pass on to the next person in the seat. Well, there you go, and so I'm assuming that she's saying to us that if you all approve this number, it will be in her manual.
See, I have a question, do we enter into contract?
That's what I was gonna say, why don't we have a contract? And that way, there is something on, on file, on record. And, you know, we could sign a contract with the, the individual funeral homes, that this is what we will pay, and then it can renew however many years you want to renew it.
Mary, you sound like a lawyer.
Let's hold, let's hold all this up while we draft a twenty-page document to take care of a body.
When it kinda clarifies the, the, the understanding as to how the call, the, the time, how the timeline starts.
I agree with you entirely, and I'm gonna look back at the Health and Safety Code, but we wanna be, obviously, we wanna take care of constituents, but this shouldn't be on, you know, something we do on a regular basis necessarily, like, you know, this shouldn't be something that folks are inclined to abuse and have the county pay for, uh rather than pay when they or the decedent has the money to do it. So, yeah, I mean, we can put standards in there, but I think Ms. Williams is much more familiar than all of us about the standards she's abided by. And if she wants to give me a shot at, or give me a, a document that's got uh the, you know, the floor, the ceiling of what she's been doing, and then incorporate this thing, I don't mind drafting that. Question is, do you go around to each of the folks and have them sign this contract before the occasion arises? Do you have them sign it on the night or day in question, and it only applies to this one body? And there are a lot of questions we need to think through about what that policy is, but there's certainly never a, there's seldom a, a downside to having the expectations of the parties spelled out in writing.
And in our, uh, meeting with the, uh, film home directors, we said we were gonna put something in writing. The judge, uh, and uh the couple, uh, ones that I talked to, so we could have something in writing to about that. I know I won't be here forever, and so I do know that I need to, to have something for somebody to follow.
Well, I would be interested to know the things that, that you do on a routine basis, and maybe we could write those down, but would also be interested to know what other counties may be doing on this note, and maybe we add some of that into this document for protocols that may apply down the road.
And as far as um another instance, if someone comes in our county and die and have an accident, we are responsible for their burial. And the reason I know I had a, kind of, disagreement with Brazos County, we had two residents from Grimes County that um died in Brazos County. And so the county attorney looked it up and found out that they had to do the burial of the Grimes County residents. So it's just.
But it was a pauper, right? And we're not talking about people that have money.
No, it was the paupers.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is anything discussed on the dollar amount for a pauper burial?
Yes.
I don't see a note on that.
We, we don't have that note, it was not, like, uh, we went up from twelve hundred to fourteen hundred.
And you only have a balance of fourteen hundred dollars left in your.
Yes.
Budget this year.
So if we have two bodies you got left on line?
I'll be down.
We have no choice.
So is, is it consensus of the discussion, are counselors going to draw up a simple document, or is it better for us to then pursue contracts with our providers?
I think the intent today is to decide the increase, if there's gonna be an increased amount. You certainly uh request that I draft some type of document, I think we're probably talking about a page-long agreement. The real question in my mind, I wanna talk, probably think it through and talk to Brenda about it, would we have these funeral home directors sign this as a one-time deal that binds them for any case? Do we do it on an annual basis, or do we just have a document that somehow we get signed on a per-body basis? And I don't know which of those makes the most sense, but I don't think we wanna be, you know, driving out there, making sure we get that.
I'd like to sign it for, until further notice, you know, just, you've been doing these numbers.
Like your contract or something.
For some period of time.
Three years or something.
At least since thirteen.
Make it four and a half, I'll be out of office then.
Are you not waiting on sticking around?
I'm sorry? I, I might be a recipient of what we're talking about, or, you know, the voters can make that call. Ms. Williams, thank you very much. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion for Commissioner's Court on Agenda Item Number fourteen, that we increase the current rate from whatever it is to three hundred dollars per body pickup, with the understanding that that includes the first hour of wait, but additional wait time would be paid at the rate of fifty dollars per hour if it is indeed incurred. Second. Are you gonna pre-see? I don't, I don't remember having the discussion on the pauper funeral cost from twelve to fourteen hundred.
Fifteen.
We did?
Yes.
Okay. So then I'll also include in that motion increasing pauper burial fee, which is currently at twelve hundred dollars per funeral, to fourteen hundred dollars per funeral.
We should say up to fourteen hundred.
Because sometimes it's cheaper.
In case somebody.
Okay, up to.
You got another grantor.
Alright.
Out of the count.
So did you get that changed, Minute Taker, is up to fourteen hundred? Alright, so that's my motion. Second. That was Chad. Mr. Mallon?
Yes.
There's a mission, there is a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number fourteen. First by Judge Joe Pouth, seconded by Commissioner Mallon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ms. Williams, thank you.
Thank you.
Glad we got that thing here. And then Mr. Foltz, you'll work with us on that?
You bet.
Thank you, sir. Moving right along to number fifteen, review and discuss county properties identified that could possibly be put up for sale. See attachment fifteen. When, uh, Commissioners, when, we had the request from Commissioner Wa- uh, Mr. Walker, road and bridge engineer, Commissioner, uh, Miss, you wanna be a Commissioner too? Okay, alright. Mr. Walker brought up that there was a piece of property, that, just a fifteen-foot wide strip, and that possibility of it, one of the neighbors on either side might wanna purchase that property. Anyway, we agreed to do that, and then that generated my curiosity, what other properties do we have? So I sent a request to the District Tax Assessor's Office and said, would you put together a list of all Grimes County properties? And that attachment is submitted, I then, and there, and some of these are being used, and some of them are not being used. I asked Mr. Walker to review the list, and he reviewed the list, and he even recommended a couple that might possibly be put up for sale. I don't think we need to make a decision today, but since I can't talk to you without being here, I wanted to get this information in front of you, let you review it, and um over the next couple of weeks, or month, or whatever time it takes. And then, after your review, let's come back together, make a decision of what properties are of no use to us that might be better suited to people that might wanna buy it and put it into use, get it on the tax rolls, and let's rock and roll.
Mr. County Attorney, if you could.
Yes.
Help me out here, I believe this discussion, well, I certainly believe it's a valid discussion, I think it may be one of those discussions that we might wanna consider uh holding in closed session due to. I think that's one of the.
It is, it's, it's a matter that we could put on, uh, put for closed session, obviously, the intent is to avoid disclosing to something that may uh lead to compromised sale, let's say. But certainly, it's uh, generally speaking, it's something that would be put on a closed session, correct?
Just, just for thought.
Sure. Sure, no, but I mean, this information is available to the public.
Yes.
And I wanted to make it available to you, and I don't disagree with what you're saying, Commissioner, that once we start deciding what might be for sale, what might not be for sale, then if we're legally able to do that, then we would hold a closed session to discuss that, and I guess discuss potential values and things of that sort.
Right, it's, it's the same reason that when you're in your private life, you don't go telling people when you got a lead on a piece you're buying or a piece that you're selling, is you compromise the sale. And if that is the place that we find ourselves, then for at least that reason, we could put it on a closed session.
Sure. But I mean, as you are selling your own private properties, you usually put a for-sale sign up.
Right, right. It, it, I guess it's when you have a buyer, you have a contract, a lot of whispering because nobody wants to tell the world what you, what the number is, what you would sell for, and just a lot of factors that go into that, that you don't want to compromise the sale.
Absolutely. So I, I take heed to what you say, Commissioner.
Thanks, sir.
So again, there's no action on our part. I just wanted you to have the information in front of you, put your thoughts to it, and if it's appropriate, and I think it is at some point, we can bring it back up, have discussion, and make some decisions. That being said, let's go to, are there's any other comments, Commissioner? Going to Agenda Item Number sixteen, consider the proposed budget FY twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, and take action to adopt the budget with a record vote pursuant to Local Government Court Code one-one-one point zero-zero-eight. So my recommendation that we table this agenda item as we get some finalized data from the Auditor's Office, and we as a court have an opportunity to review that. Do we need a vote on table?
It's always your policy, it's whatever you choose. If the court said, if somebody on the court said, heck no, we're not moving on, I want to motion to table, then someone could say, demand that. But if everybody's okay with it, then
Well, heck yeah, I'll make a motion to table Agenda Item Number sixteen. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. There is a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number sixteen by, first by Joe Pouth, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor of table, up tabling Agenda Item Number sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, there are no heck nos. We'll move on to Number seventeen. Consider and take action to propose a tax rate and, and take a record vote on proposed tax rate. If proposed tax rate will exceed the rollback rate, or the effective tax rate, whichever is lower, take record vote and schedule two public hearings. It is proposed that the tax rate is remaining the same, even though valuations have gone up. The tax rate is point zero-five-three-zero-two-six-one per hundred. I'm not sure why it goes out that far, but it does. And that's the tax rate that we had last year, and that is what is proposed for this year. Ms. Waters?
Can we take action on this if we don't approve the budget?
We're not taking, we can take action on the
This is not the tax rate, this is the proposed.
This is the proposed tax rate.
Okay.
So consider and take action to propose a tax rate, and
Gotcha.
our, we're proposing a tax rate one more time, point zero-five-three-zero-two-six-one per hundred. Ms. Wagner, this is where we take a record vote. Commissioner Mallett, how do you vote?
Uh, aye.
Commissioner Dobianski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox, how do you vote?
Aye.
County Judge votes aye. Well, is there, I guess, did you make the motion?
Yes, he did.
On the tax rate, okay, yes. All right. Are we legal?
Uh, you got folks that'll want to know if there was a second, so.
Was there a second?
I second.
Okay, Commissioner Dobianski. You talked soft, I thought we had.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think you did just fine.
All right. That'll take us to Agenda Item Number eighteen, consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge as signatory.
Judge, before you move on, obviously, you want to announce there's no need, you're not exceeding the rollback rate, no need for two public hearings, but is there a plan for the next hearing? I know you tabled the budget. Is there a date certain when the budget's going to appear and the tax rate will fall after that?
Yes, sir. The Commissioners and the judge in our last budget hearing decided we probably would not have enough information to make the decision today, and therefore, we have it on the next regular meeting of Commissioners Court, September the twelfth.
At nine AM.
Yes, sir. Right here. Thank you for clarifying that.
I apologize.
No, no.
If anybody had a question, if anybody TV land had a question, I want to be everybody
No, I think that's important.
It's gonna be set for consideration.
We are a transparent court.
Where'd you go?
So we are on Agenda Item Number eighteen regarding the burn ban. Some lucky people may have gotten some moisture, but we just got wind, light, and thunder on the south end.
You have a fire chief from the back.
Chief, what would be your recommendation?
No change.
No change. I think that's a good idea. So we will leave it as no change? What's our, what's our, how many days?
Just ask that question.
It's still within the ninety days.
Yeah, we're still within the ninety days.
It's only been about a month.
Was it July twenty-fifth or something?
Yeah, I wish that could last some time, so we'd get Commissioners, Agenda Item Number nineteen, do you have anything to report on the strategic plan, updates, considerations, or thoughts?
We do have the weights officer in the proposed budget for next year.
The comment was, we do have the weights officer in the proposed budget for twenty nineteen, and that was in the strategic plan. Our strategic plan item. Thank you, Commissioner Dobianski.
You're welcome.
Any other comments there? If none, we'll move to Agenda Item Number nineteen for adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion adjourned.
I second.
There's a motion before the court from Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski on Agenda Item Number twenty to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.